Good morning, everyone. I would like to call the Lake County Planning Commission meeting for March 10th, 2022, to order. We'll go ahead and start with the Pledge of Legions.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before we bring up our first timed item at nine o'clock, we'll go ahead and go with citizens' input. If there's anybody wishing to speak on anything in general that is not on the agenda today, feel free to go ahead and approach the podium, or if there's any hands raised in the Zoom room, Jake?
At this time, there are no hands raised in the Zoom room.
Okay, and I don't see anybody who wishes to speak on citizens' input, so we will move forward. I'm showing our first timed item as nine o'clock, so we will go ahead and get into that. Our first item is continued from, excuse me, January 27th, 2022. It's a public hearing on consideration of Amendment MMU 20-11 to major use permit UP 18-25 and an addendum to mitigated negative declaration IS 18-110 to grant the expansion of the existing use to legitimize an 8100 square foot building that was built without land use approval or building permits and is associated with the previously approved major use permit UP 18-25. The applicant is KLS-RBS LLC, Mike Mittel and Jed Morris on the project, or, excuse me, and the project is located at 9475 Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, California, and further described as APN 011-004-60. And I do believe Eric will be presenting. Stand by.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're experiencing technical difficulties momentarily.
Thank you for your patience.
We're trying to get it in share mode so everybody can see this.
Okay.
You had it shared twice.
All right.
All right, we see it. Great, thank you.
Excellent, thank you so much.
All right. Good morning, Commissioners. For the record, Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. As the Chair indicated, and my mouse is, oh, there it is. This item was first opened on January 27th. The use itself is established. It was established by two different use permits. One occurred, the original occurred in 2018, and then it was modified again in 2019. And I believe the hearings actually took place in 2019 and 2020. Project's located on Bottle Rock Road at 9475 Bottle Rock. And just to bring you back to the original reason for this, the building was actually built by the prior owner. That question was asked on January 27th, who actually began construction on it? The property sold on September 3rd of 2021. The building was red-tagged in 2020, so that would have been under the prior owner. Current owner is trying to legitimize the building. There are several problems with this that we have not yet found any kind of a solution for. The first problem is a determination of whether the property is within the scenic combining district. And if you look at the APN book, the scenic combining line stops about 115 feet short of the building. However, determination had been made previously that if a property is in the scenic combining district, if any part of it is, the entire property is. So that's something that we're still trying to resolve internally. On February 24th, I sent an email to the current property owner's applicant, Mike Mittel, indicating that a visual analysis would be a starting point to see how visible this building is. I've received five emails and one letter objecting to the building, but it was also a letter objecting to the use itself, which is not in question today. We're limited to the building itself. So to get on with what we're going to talk about today, if I get the right glasses on here, I can see it. First is the request. I've kind of touched on that already. The scope is fairly limited to one 8100 square foot building that's 26 feet tall. The analysis is limited, again, to the building. We did a SEQA analysis. We actually did a mitigated negative declaration. I mentioned the public comments that we've received. I think you've got all of the comments that I've received. We did receive a last-minute email yesterday, late yesterday, and I believe Trish has handed out green sheets on that email, and then staff's recommendation. So the request, again, I've touched on it. It's for a building. It's for an 8100 square foot building that is not complete. It was red-tagged, I believe, in July of 2020, and construction stopped on it after the county realized that there was no building permits issued for this structure. So the zoning, the entire property, with the exception of the smaller lots that are in the lighter green area, all the land around this site is zoned RL. The smaller lots are generally five acres in size. Those are zoned rural residential, and they're mostly developed with dwellings. The cultivation site is four acres of outdoor cultivation. The building itself is located in the relative center of the property. Properties were originally three separate lots that had been merged, and so now it's one tax lot. 011-004-60 is the tax lot number. Here's an aerial photo. The building in question is right in the middle of that cleared area. Let me go back to that. Again, the entire property is in the SC combining district, and so the determination of whether or not this part of the property is actually in the SC combining district probably isn't that relevant, because even if it were not in the scenic combining district, accessory buildings have a height limit of 20 feet. This building's 26 feet tall, so even under best of circumstances, the height is excessive. Scenic combining allows for up to a 5,000 square foot building. This one's 8100 square feet. So if we assume that it is, in fact, in the scenic combining, it exceeds the size limits. And again, there is a clearer picture of the building. Building elevations, height is 26. Scenic combining allows a height of 15. Non-scenic combining allows a height of 20. So under the best of circumstances, it exceeds the height by six feet. As far as how we evaluated it, we looked at the general plan, we looked at the Lakeport Area Plan. Even though it's in Kelseyville, it's within the boundary of the Lakeport Area Plan's purview. And then there are several sections of the code that apply to this. Article 7, RL zoning district. Article 34 may apply. That's scenic combining. And Article 60, Part 60.33, is for modifications to an approved plan. And technically, it would be an amendment, not a modification. So getting back to the situation, Bottle Rock is a scenic road. It's designated as a scenic corridor. Scenic corridors are subject to specific regulations under Article 34. Tax Lot 11460 is designated as RLSC, which is scenic combining. County has determined that if any portion of a lot is in the scenic overlay zone, then these rules apply. That may be changing, but for now, that's my understanding of our interpretation of the scenic combining. We're looking and making changes to the scenic combining, and our department director has identified some potential ways that we can evaluate whether a project that may not meet the scenic combining requirements could still be allowed, and that would involve, among other things, a visual study. Regardless, the building would be non-compliant, whether the scenic combining designation is applied to the property. Article 34, I've copied what, when I created this PowerPoint, had been the operative portions of that chapter. And again, the analysis, this is from January 27th's hearing. I left them in, in the event that the Planning Commission believes that the scenic combining is relevant. So ag processing buildings cannot exceed a use area of 5,000 square feet. This building is 8100 square feet, and that includes greenhouses, hot houses, and incidental Again, building is 8100 square feet in size, clearly over that limit. The height is actually a bigger issue, in my opinion. Whether or not the scenic combining applies, the height, best case, is limited to 20 feet. In the scenic combining, there's a height limit of 15 feet for accessory structures. And again, the building is 26 feet tall, and it's painted bright white. Modifications, this is Article 60. One of the purposes of Article 60 is to allow changes to major use permits as an alternative to permit revocation. In this case, the 8100 square foot building was built on-site without permits and was subsequently red-tagged. It is unclear, actually, it is clear who ordered the building. That would have been the prior owner. I'm not sure that a variance would be even applicable at this point, just because of the terms of a variance within our zoning ordinance. I've indicated that the only way that I could see that the building may even be considered is through a variance, pardon me, and potentially through a brand-new use permit, but we didn't see any basis for issuance of a variance, which requires special circumstances that are typically related to topography. And this site is no different than the neighboring sites around it, so it wouldn't, in my mind, be a candidate for a variance. Told you that the mitigated negative declaration had been submitted to the state. We didn't receive any adverse comments on the building, which is not unusual for state However, SEQA does not apply to projects when a public agency rejects or disapproves, denies the request. So we kind of erred on the side of caution with the initial study. Public comments, I've mentioned that we've received, at the time I wrote this, four emails and one letter. We've since received another email that has been distributed, and those are in your packet as Attachment 7. So the recommendation, we're recommending that you do not adopt IS 20-110 and that you deny the modification request. That would require the building to be removed. And so with that, I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your report, Eric. We will bring it back to the Commission for some discussion before we open it up for public comment. Anybody have any questions for Eric?
Not at this time.
No? And Eric, are you aware of STAT, or if there's the applicant or their consultant here or in Zoom? Jake, is there anybody with their hand raised as the applicant in the Zoom room?
I do have someone in the Zoom room with their hands raised. I don't know if they are consultants. I did have Mary Draper, who I think we talked about earlier, being a consultant.
Okay, just as long as we, we'll just go ahead and open it up for public comment at this point. If anybody wishes to speak on this agenda item, please feel free to approach the podium. Jake, if you'd like to, we can go ahead and address that hand in the Zoom room.
Okay, well, we do have two hands, and we'll start with Mary Draper here.
Thank you.
Mary, will you please confirm your first and last name?
Thank you. This is Mary Draper, and good morning to all of you. I would like to correct what Eric Porter stated. I got the initial use permits on Bottle Rock and got the licenses in March of 2020. Jed Morris took over the property, moved on to the property, and I moved out in early March. And it was a while later, I went back to get my mail. We were in a sales agreement at the time. However, it did not close escrow till later. And when I went there, I saw the building, and I was told that they had a building permit on it, because I had brought up the fact that that would be illegal without a building permit. So then, a couple months later, somebody called me and told me that they had received a red tag, that one of Jed's employees had told me, had told him that they'd received a red tag on the property. I called Eric Porter. Eric Porter told me that the red tag was going to be taken care of, that Mary Jane was on it, and they were working on it. He sent me an email telling me, "Thank you for working with Jed on this." I did not build the building. I did not give approval to build the building. I had absolutely nothing to do with building the building. I had asked Jed if he would please take responsibility for what he did. He told me that he would, but obviously, he did not. I am not against the building. I think that the buildings are needed for people to dry. I think, as somebody commented, that it could be painted, you know, a color to go with the scenery, that a lot of money has been put in to the property. And unfortunately, I was a novice and didn't realize that you would need a building that size, but he does. And I think it's unfortunate if he has to tear it down, but I will not take responsibility for that building that I had absolutely nothing to do with. And I am shocked that Eric is saying that I did. He has the email from me. I did call him about it, and in fact, it was a couple months ago. Eric said something about me building that building, and I told him, "Absolutely, I did not." So that's all I have to say. I hope it clears it up. Jed and I went into contract in March of 2020, when he took over the property. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment.
If I could elaborate on that, the dates and ownership that I told you were based on when the deed was recorded. It's quite possible that what Mary just told you is correct. I don't know when she vacated the property and when Jed Morris moved on to it. However, what she had indicated may well be true. I can only go by what I have documented.
Thank you for that clarification. Jake, do we by chance have another hand in the Zoom room?
Yes, at this time, I have one more hand raised in the Zoom room. Mike Mittel, I have given you permission to speak. Looks like you are unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Hi, this is Mike Mittel, representing KLS-RBS and Jed. I believe Jed's on this call also, but we're, I guess we're still a little confused, because we've had multiple meetings with Andrew and Eric over this last month, since the last time this was before you guys. We were under the understanding, after talking to Andrew, that they're softening their approach on the scenic corridor and that the building, once they've analyzed the maps and where it's at, they're telling us it's not inside the scenic combining district. And Andrew sent me the scenic analysis on Friday of last week, and, you know, I talked to him about the possibility of getting an extension and so that we can get this analysis done. The other problem that Eric has is the height of the building. We've been talking to the Ag Commission, because there is a 20-foot height on accessory structures, but there's a 45-foot height limit on ag accessory structures. The Ag Department, we've talked with the new Ag Commissioner. She's not 100% against giving us an ag sign-off on this building. She set up a meeting with Andrew and Mary Darby, I believe, for sometime next week to discuss the possibility. And we would like to have time to do this scenic analysis and see where the Ag Department lands on this, the possibility of converting it into an ag accessory structure. And we would just like the time to do that.
Thank you. Does that conclude your comment?
Yes.
Thanks. Thank you. I don't see anybody in chambers that wishes to speak on this item. Jake, no more hands in the Zoom room?
Correct, there are no more new hands in the Zoom room.
Okay. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the Commission for discussion.
Madam Chair, if I may?
Good morning. Yes, please.
Good morning, Commissioners. So just to clarify, we've gone over this, I'm sure you remember, when we've gone over the scenic combining district before, but I thought it'd be important to mention it again here. The scenic combining district does, as any zoning, apply to the entirety of the property to which it is, to which the zoning is applied. However, all zoning districts have parameters, which means they have an edge. There are properties who may, which may straddle that edge. It is staff's responsibility to determine when they run into properties that have that particular circumstance where they straddle that edge, as to where the particular zoning district ends. If there's questions as to where the zoning district ends, the zoning ordinance provides processes by which staff can make that, not staff, but by which that determination as to where it ends can be made, based on maps. And if that is confused, is that, excuse me, if that is still confusing, then they can ask for clarification from the Planning Commission, or a determination from the Planning Commission as to where that ends. But the ultimate determination is done through analysis by staff. But I think there has been some confusion as to what it means to apply to the entire property. If the property is zoned a particular way, that zoning applies to the entire property, unless there is some other criteria that would truncate that application, meaning the edge of the district as described on a map. As far as this particular application goes, if your analysis as a commission of the facts and circumstances and the evidence presented to you today by staff and the public convinces you that there is currently a violation existing on the property, then you must vote no on approving this permit. And that would be under Article 51, Section 51.4, A6. Our, Section 51.4 is where the mandatory findings are listed for this particular permit. A6 is the finding that no violations currently exist on the property. If there are violations that currently exist on the property, you cannot make that finding, and if you cannot make that finding, then you cannot vote to approve the permit. Conversely, if with the present, with the material presented to you today, you can make the determination that there are no violations currently existing on the property, then you can make that finding, and you can vote yes for this, to approve this permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Question for Council. Nicole, I'm not an attorney, but based on everything I've heard again today, and it doesn't seem like the staff presentation was much different than before, in my evolving view is that the scenic combining district point is moot, given the height of the building. And so I appreciate that clarification, but I don't feel like there's been much progress made since we agreed to continue this the first time. And I don't know what a meeting with the new Ag Commissioner would do, unless she is in a position to determine that cannabis is an agricultural crop and can thereby make a finding about the height of the building. That, I don't believe that's within her power currently to do. And I would wonder why we would have that meeting if, after two hearings, we really haven't learned anything new or different.
I'm sorry, this is Mary Darby, the Director of CDD, and I am not aware of a meeting that's been set with the Ag Commissioner. So I'm sorry, I cannot comment on that at all at this time.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
Please.
Chair, my understanding of the presentation that staff has provided prior, as well as today, the two presentations, is that there were a number of issues. Scenic combining and the definition of this particular structure as an ag building were two issues. The third issue was existing violations, that there was grading and a retaining wall installed without a permit, and that there was a building installed without a permit. Your Commission does not have the authority to approve these, to approve those kinds of actions through this mechanism, because you must make a finding here that there is no, there is no existing violations at the time of the approval. So in this moment, in this hearing, are there any existing violations? If you can make that finding that there are no existing violations, then you can vote yes. If, however, there are existing violations, then you would need, you could not make that finding. And if these, if this building and the grading done related to the building are not permitted, they are in fact, and there is a current red tag on that work, then they, that is in fact, a violation that exists now. You can ask staff to clarify the, where the red tag process is. You can ask staff to clarify whether or not this building could be, through another process, made permitted, and whether or not the grading done could be permitted, but the process to permit these things is not a use permit, not after the fact, because they are, they would be, in fact, current violations.
Thank you, Nicole.
I'm ready to make a motion.
Do you guys want to discuss it further? Do you guys want to give the applicant a chance to answer those questions that were brought up at all?
I'm prepared to move forward as well as my colleague is. I said this at the last hearing, it just feels like this is a square peg in a round hole, and you've made dedicated efforts to work further with the applicant, and now there sounds like there might be some action with the Ag Commissioner, but I think after two hearings on this subject, I'm prepared to move forward.
Yeah, it's not an ag use, so I think that's irrelevant.
Okay.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the initial study IS 20-110, prepared for the project submitted by KLS-RBS LLC, on a property located at 9475 Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, further described as APN 011-004-60, will have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore mitigated negative declaration shall not be adopted, based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 10th, 2022.
Second.
Motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries?
I move that the Planning Commission find that the modification MMU 20-11, applied for by KLS-RBS LLC, on a property located at 9475 Bottle Rock Road, Kelseyville, further described as APN 011-004-60, does not meet the requirements of Articles 34 and 60.33 of the Lake County zoning ordinance, and the modification MMU 20-11 be denied with prejudice based on the findings listed in the staff report dated March 10th, 2022.
Second.
Motion's been moved in second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries? Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission's decision, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day following the Planning Commission's final determination. before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. Taking up our second agenda item, it's a public hearing on consideration of a major use permit UP 20-24 and a mitigated negative declaration IS 20-27. The project applicant Walnut Ranch, Omar Malfalvin, is proposing one A-type 3B medium mixed light commercial cannabis license, three type A, one C specialty cottage license, and a type three self-distribution license that would allow legal transportation of cannabis to and from the site. Project is located at 12182 White Rock, excuse me, White Rock Canyon Road, Upper Lake, APNs 002-010-04 and 00, excuse me, 022-010-05.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Eric Porter, Associate Planner, Lake County. You have before you a request for a commercial cannabis on White Rock Canyon Road. Subject site is about 37-plus acres in size. Applicants requesting one A-type 3B and three A-type 1C, uh, commercial cannabis cultivation licenses along with one A-type 13 self-distribution license. There are two parcels involved. Primary parcel is APN 02201004 and 05 is a clustering parcel. Omar Malfalvin is the applicant and the property owner is identified as Middle Creek Ranch LLC. I've indicated what the applicant's requesting. I need to clarify, especially with the scenic combining. This property is technically in the scenic combining, however, it is not adjacent to the source of the scenic road. The scenic road is Elk Mountain Road, which is located several hundred feet away from the edge of either lot. So the property is accessed by White Rock Canyon Road. And because it's not immediately adjacent to the source of the scenic combining, we disregarded that overlay on it. It is in the high fire area. We have received several comments from a neighbor, Paul Kemp, that are part of the record, objecting to certain aspects of the project. There would be greenhouses, there would be 12 in total. And I've indicated the types of permits that the applicants requested. These are the properties. The source of the scenic is down here, which is Elk Mountain Road. The cultivation site is actually on the property to the right, which is not adjacent to that scenic corridor.
Eric?
Yes?
The image you've got on page nine of the staff report, I think, shows that very clearly. I found that to be helpful.
Thank you. Here's kind of a close-up of what the applicant is proposing. And each one of the green rectangles represents a greenhouse. So, as with any major use permit, we look at general plan conformance, we look at area plan conformance. In this case, it's the Upper Lake Nice area plan. And we look at the zoning ordinance to make sure it complies with the applicable sections, articles within the zoning ordinance. So, we have to make six findings that are found in Article 51.4. There are three additional findings that we have to make in Article 27, which I'll get to in a moment. We did notify all neighbors within 725 feet of the proposal. We did several site visits based on concerns raised by a neighbor. And there were initial, some, initially some violations on the property, which the applicant has since cleared up. Specifically, there were two RVs. They actually have permission for one of the RVs as a result of the Mendocino complex fire of 2018. They have a temporary building, I'm sorry, temporary dwelling permit issued for one of the RVs. And so the one RV that remains on the site is legally there. They can stay there until March of next year. They do have a building permit issued for a house. They have not finished construction of the house. However, the temporary dwelling permit is in conjunction with a issued building permit for a new dwelling. There were several shipping containers that were on the site illegally. The applicant has since removed those. So we confirmed last week that the site is free of violations. So getting back to the required findings for approval, the use won't be detrimental to the health, safety, morals, comfort, and general welfare of the neighborhood. The site is adequate in size, shape, location, and physical characteristics to accommodate the use, and that streets, highways, and pedestrian facilities are reasonably adequate to safely accommodate the use. The other three in Article 51.4 are that there is adequate public or private services, that the project is in conformance with the applicable provisions of the general plan, the code, and the specific area plan, in this case, the Upper Lake Nice area plan, and that there are no violations of Chapters 5, 17, 21, 23, or 26. We confirm that number six is no longer in question. We also found that each one of the six findings for approval can be met, either are met or can be met through mitigation measures. The remaining three findings that have to be made are found in Article 27, Sub 11, Sub AT, which are that the use complies with the development standards found in Article 27, which is commercial cannabis cultivation, that the applicant's qualified to make the application, and that the application complies with the qualifications for a use permit also found in Article 27. We were able to make all of those findings. Regarding number two, the applicant, the applicant and his employees have passed live scan, so they are legally eligible to make the application. Combining district limits square footage of greenhouses. Elk Mountain Road is a scenically designated road, however, the project site is not adjacent to Elk Mountain Road. And White Rock Canyon Road, which serves the site, is not scenically designated. This is the boundary of the scenic corridor. And Commissioner Hess, that might be the graphic that you're referring to?
Yes.
Okay. Just to clarify that. So the cultivation site is clearly not within the boundary of that scenic combining overlay. This is a view of, well, it, it's not a view of the site, it's a view of the property in front of the site from Elk Mountain Road. So if you go over the hill, Mr. Malfalvin's property is actually beyond the crest of the hill. So, we evaluated the, the project for CEQA through a initial study, and it resulted in a mitigated negative declaration. And we found that there was some potential for impacts related to aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural, geologic, and tribal resources, noise, and overall mandatory findings of significance. So we put mitigation measures in place to address each one of these categories that potentially could impact the area. As far as cumulative impacts go, there was some potential for cumulative impacts. And I should note that there is a, an approved cannabis permit located immediately adjacent to the subject site. The adjacent project is one acre of outdoor cultivation that was approved in year 2020 through file number UP 20-12. And we were able to make findings that the impacts that resulted cumulatively could be mitigated. And that's mitigated through a combination of mitigation measures associated with UP 20-12, which is Collins, High Caliber is the name of the company, and through UP 20-24, which is the project that we're considering today. So, we've evaluated water use from a cumulative standpoint, pesticide use, they're going to use organic pesticides. They have to be very careful with any chemicals that they put on the plants because the state has incredibly high standards for the quality of their cannabis product. Air pollution, they're proposing air filtration systems. Diesel generators are prohibited, burning cannabis plant material on site is prohibited, and dust mitigation is required during and after construction. Water pollution, erosion control measures are required through the best management practices. Site disturbance out of season, meaning grading in winter months, is prohibited. Energy use, they're not requesting any additional power. They have an existing 200-amp service, and the power that they need for the greenhouses would come from that existing 200-amp service. Land cover, this project will affect about 35,840 square feet of a 37-acre site. One permitted, one acre outdoor cultivation site, oh, Collins, UP 20-12. The total land area for both of these cultivation sites is about 55 acres, and the total cultivation area on both sites is about 80,000 square feet, which would roughly be just under two acres. So the recommendation is to adopt mitigated negative declaration IS 20-27 and to approve use permit UP 20-24 with conditions. And I'll take any questions that you might have.
Thank you for your report, Eric. Does anyone on the commission have any questions or comments for staff before we open it up for public comment? Nope? Okay. We're going to go ahead and open this item up for public comment. If anybody wishes to speak in chambers, please feel free to approach the podium. Good morning. If you could just state your first and last name for the record, please.
My name is Paul Kemp.
Okay.
My general welfare will be greatly impacted by this project. I am neither for or against the project. I'm against the hours of operation, controlling the traffic. My family and I live right at the intersection of White Rock Canyon Road, you can see it on the map, and Elk Mountain Road. So all of that traffic goes by my house. I'd like to see the hours of operation shortened for a couple of reasons. One is for my general welfare. Also, the school bus turns around in front of my house every day at about 7:30 and again at about 4 o'clock in the afternoon. So I would like to see the hours of operation not start until like 8 o'clock in the morning and maybe during construction go till 6 o'clock in the afternoon, Monday through Friday, and then on Saturday, also limited hours. And I like to see no operation on Sunday. I'd like to have a day of rest when I don't have trucks going by all the time. So that's kind of my, my opinion on that part of the project. A lot of things that, that are in that report make it seem like it's not really impacting. For example, the, the percentage of greenhouse to the total acreage of the two parcels. But those, if you look at that map, the greenhouses are going to be crammed into this real thin space between White Rock Canyon Road and Middle Creek. So don't be, I'm just saying, don't be misled by, oh, it's a little tiny project on a big piece of land. It's probably the best use of land that they could come up with. It could have been walnuts, it could have been grapes, it could have been something else. It is what it is. It's bound, it's bound to happen sometime. I would just like to see it, you know, be sure that it's within the parameters of the permit. The other thing that really affects the neighborhood is the drainage. That whole part where the greenhouses are going to be built is drainage for that whole area behind it to the north and east. There are four culverts that handle that drainage, that get it down to Middle Creek on my property. So I want to be extra sure that there's not any drainage problems either during or after the construction and during the operation of the, of the process. Oh, so one of the state agencies in the report and, and the response had mentioned that they should have wattles on both sides of the project, east and west. In the staff report, I think it says only wattles on the west side by the creek. I think the wattle should also extend around to the White Rock Canyon side because right next to White Rock Canyon Road is the major drainage. It's like a seasonal creek that comes in there and drains that whole hillside. So have to be very, very careful about the drainage there. So I mentioned the school bus, I mentioned the drainage and water courses. I, I submitted my comments, I think you might have them. The only other thing is widening of roads. I really am not going to have anybody widen the road that's on my property. If somebody feels like they need to widen the road on their property for fire or whatever, they certainly have the right to do that. The road on my property, the driveway, as it's described, is the old Middle Creek Road that went to the old Middle Creek Bridge, and it's a hard-surfaced road. So you read in the application that they're going to rip that up and put in a 20-foot-wide gravel road. And then in another part of the application, it says they're not going to use gravel road. So there's some inconsistencies in there. You couldn't put a 20-foot-wide road where the existing road is because there's a, that's the last final giant culvert that takes the drainage from the area down to Middle Creek. It's not going to work, and it's on my property and I'm not going to allow it. Then one other just comment is regarding the visibility on the scenic quarter. I'm not claiming scenic quarter, but I got to tell you, that picture of that hill, that's a bunch of malarkey. I submitted pictures that you can see from Middle, from the bridge over Middle Creek, and you look up there and you can see right where the greenhouses are going to be. I'm not claiming scenic, scenic quarter or anything. I'm saying it's inaccurate information. You can take a picture from any place and make it prove, you know, what you want to say. I went out yesterday or the day before, again, and stood on Middle Creek Bridge, right in the middle, and looked right up. So the greenhouses will be seen. Apparently, it's not a problem in Lake County for the most part, as long as it's not on a scenic quarter. And a six-foot-high fence is not going to block anything because six foot at that distance is, it's really nothing. So I think I've covered all of my points. I'm not objecting to the process. I just want the process to be within my general welfare of the neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake, is there any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have one hand raised in the Zoom room. Sufjan, I give you permission to speak. It looks like you're unmuted. Will you please confirm your first and last name?
Yes, Sufjan Hamouda.
Good morning.
Hi. The applicant should be in the room, but if not, I'm not, I, I can respond to the comments. I'm representing Omar. So we appreciate the comments and I, I can definitely touch on a bunch of those topics here. I was taking notes. So the proposed greenhouses will not actually have building pans, building pads underneath them, so the surface below it will remain impermeable. So although the structure will be covered, any rainfall will actually permeate into the ground underneath it, which will not increase the runoff. Additionally, as was mentioned, we do have straw wattles surrounding most of the western half of it. Yes, we do not have cover in the eastern, but that can definitely be implemented very easily and surround the entire cultivation area. The greenhouses will have engineered plans, obviously, for the building permits, and there's going to be no grading involved in there. So although the construction will take place, no grading is anticipated, therefore, there's no potential for the erosion runoff. The hours are 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM, so I'm not sure if there was misunderstanding there that is also included in the staff report. There are four employees also anticipated. So when we're talking about traffic and truck trips here, they would be very limited in terms of vehicles for the employees, sure, but trucks or larger trucks taking cannabis off of the site would just be dependent upon the growing season itself and when product is being moved off. Again, the type 13 only allows for product to be removed from the site, no one else is coming onto the site. The only thing that would be allowed would be nursery plants that the applicant has purchased. So I, I believe that answers most of the questions if there's, or concerns, if there's any other questions, feel free to let me know.
Just to clarify, is there, there will be no construction or anything going on, on Sundays?
Correct. Yes. It's, we only have deliveries, as I'll learn in the staff report, we have a delivery potential from Sunday from 12:00 PM to 5:00 PM, but I'm sure the applicant would be more than happy to, to change that up. especially with the conditions of approval that can be amended if needed.
Thank you.
I have a question, I'm not sure if this is for staff or for the consultant, but Mr. Kemp is concerned about the widening of the road. And I, as I understand it, we need to have a 20 foot entrance? And is there an easement for that?
Well, in talking with the Cal Fire on an unrelated project, the fire chief, Mike Wing, indicated that Cal Fire standards apply only onsite and that any shared access easements would not be candidates for widening because of the nature of the road. And so you put a standard condition in, I didn't see it in here, but I'm pretty sure it is in here, that everything onsite has to meet Cal Fire road compliance standards. So that would not include the shared access easement, the road leading to the site. It would only be anything that's actually onsite.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Chair?
Please.
Are we still in public comment?
It's still open.
Okay, I'll wait till.
Jake, is there any other hands in the Zoom room?
No, at this time, there are no more hands in the Zoom room, but I do have a couple of phone callers. I want to mention that if you dial in via phone, you can raise your hand by dialing star nine. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jake. Anybody in chambers wish to speak on this item? Yeah, that would be the time. Or right now. Please be, please be sure to state your first and last name.
Hello, my name is Omar Malfavon.
Good morning.
The applicant, good morning, everybody. I totally hear my neighbors' concerns and I'm willing to make all those things right and not operate, you know, right, operate and address all those issues and be a good neighbor. You know, I think that's what brought us here. And I, I want to thank everybody for giving us the opportunity. You know, it's been a long journey for us to sit here and, and I look forward to collaborating with you guys and hoping to build this community up a little bit more. I know the industry is changing, but I think it's the direction that the state is going. And I just look forward to an opportunity to continue working. Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Chavez, did you have any questions?
No questions.
Okay, Jake, no more hands in the Zoom room before I close public comment?
We do have a couple of hands in the Zoom room now. The first hand I have up here is from Sam. Sam, I give you permission to speak.
Yes, hello, my name is Sam De La Paz. I'm with 421 Group, we're a cannabis consultancy based in Sonoma County. We have a lot of clients all over California. And I'm also a vice president of Hessel Farmers Grange down here in Sonoma County. I just want to speak to Omar being an ideal neighbor and applicant in this scenario. I think that, that, that proof is in the pudding by his statement right there that having, you know, someone as a neighbor who is willing to mitigate impacts to their community and to work with the neighbors, this is an ideal, this is something we push as consultants in this space to make sure that everyone remains compatible within their communities and with their neighbors to really, you know, mitigate any undesirable impacts and, and things like that. And overall, I think this property is well suited and that, that as his planner would condone and speak to as well, that it's a, it's a very good location for the specified project. So I just wanted to speak to that and say that I think Omar is an amazing applicant for that reason and his willingness to communicate and stay neighborly. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. Jake?
Yes, there are currently no more hands raised in the Zoom room.
Thank you. I will go ahead and close public comment and bring it back to the commission for some discussion. Commissioner Fields?
I'm wondering if we can just change NOI 1 and NOI 2 to meet the needs of Mr. Kemp. Mr. Kemp is one of the best musicians in our county and I have some sensitivity to his need for quiet. So I would be willing to approve this if we could change the hours to meet Mr. Kemp's needs. Is that something we can do, Eric?
Sure, my recommendation would be to add or modify three conditions. New condition A22 would be specific to the hours of operation and hours of construction. And they would be limited to 8:00 a.m. to.
6:00 p.m. weekdays.
To 6:00 p.m.
I believe he requested to 4:00 p.m. on Saturdays and nothing on Sundays. Yeah, he stated it pretty clearly in his, the first page of his green sheet.
Okay, so I have 8:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Friday and 8:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday?
9:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. Saturday and none on Sunday, I believe. Is that correct, Mr. Kemp?
Yes.
Great.
I would ask the commission to ask the applicant if they're acceptable with that because it might create otherwise a basis for an appeal if they're not.
We're getting a visual signal from the applicant with some four thumbs up.
A verbal response would be best.
Great. Second condition would actually modify condition number J1, and that would be hours of delivery. I don't know if they have control over Sunday deliveries, they may not. And right now, technically, they're limited to deliveries only occurring between noon and 5:00 p.m. on Sundays. It doesn't have to do with operation, it just strictly limits delivery times. So I'm not sure if the commission wants to make changes to that to indicate that no deliveries may occur on Sundays. Again, I don't know if they have any control over that, they may not.
But the fact that deliveries might be allowed on Sundays doesn't mean that there would always be deliveries on Sundays.
Correct.
And I feel like the applicant's probably just reserving the right, just in case like they do have to have a delivery, you know, that, that it would be noted.
It's a whole nother bag of worms. I mean, I'm imagining how difficult that would be.
Well, they may have no control over it, I guess is the point that I'm trying to make.
Sure.
And then finally, condition number H7, which would be a new condition under hydrology, and that would be that straw wattles need to be installed prior to cultivation around the perimeter of the cultivation site in order to help channel stormwater.
That was a point I wanted to make, so thank you for bringing that up, Eric.
And I think those are the only three changes that, per Mr. Kemp's concerns that are needed, unless I'm missing something.
I think those were the, the main concerns, thank you.
Madam Chair, just a more general comment because I don't think it would be fair to single out this applicant alone, but whenever storage containers are visible, I would much prefer the false siding and roof option rather than simply a fence. And my impression here is that only a small portion of the area is visible, but I take Mr. Kemp at his word. But I'd just like to go on record as saying, whenever possible, when visible, let's consider false siding and roofing.
Absolutely agree. I think if I'm understanding this right, the pictures Mr. Kemp took, and I drove by as well, are from a portion of Elk Mountain Road that is not within the scenic district?
Looks like it.
The photo that Mr. Porter showed was from the south, as I understand it.
Correct.
I think Mr. Kemp would like to respond.
May I?
Yeah, you're welcome to approach the podium.
Thank you.
And if you could just state your first and last name, just for the people out in Zoom land.
My name is Paul Kemp. I didn't look at where the scenic corridor is, but if it, if it includes the Middle Creek Bridge and you can stand on the Middle Creek Bridge and see the operation, I'm just saying, you can see it. When, and the picture that's in your package from the county was taken to, from the west, west of the Middle Creek Bridge. And there's a big hill there, and you'd stand there and take a picture. Well, no, of course you can't see anything. You go about 400 feet east toward Upper Lake and you look up the valley, you'll be able to see it. That's all I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you.
With regard to condition number B2, it actually offers two ways of screening the containers. The second part of the condition would allow a fence six feet tall. Per Commissioner Hess's comment, if you want to eliminate that as an option and require false siding and false roof on the shipping containers, the second part of that condition would need to be removed. The fence would no longer be on the table.
Commissioner Hess?
I'd be interested in the applicant's response to that. I had never seen a staff report that so explicitly stated the option of siding and roofing. And there are certainly applications that this commission has approved in the past where
It would have been nice.
It would have been a desirable condition to impose. And so I'm, I'm open to my colleagues' feelings about, you know, requiring that in this case when there have been so many cases where we have not imposed a similar condition.
I'm not sure if I, if I feel like we should impose and make it a requirement. The applicant and, you know, can use their best judgment. You know, it is an option. I feel like if it's something that visually is more appealing and pleasing, something to consider. We're getting a thumbs up from the, from the applicant.
Well, the applicant's been very accommodating.
I, I, we appreciate that for sure. With public comment being closed and having the item up for discussion, I, I feel like we've kind of touched on all of the points to make everybody happy with everything. So I'm looking for motion.
Could I ask for clarification on condition B2?
Is that with the wattles?
No, that's the, either screen fence or the false siding, false roof.
It sounds.
So my understanding is that we're going to leave it as is?
Correct.
My understanding is that, yes, we'll leave it with the option.
Okay.
Thank you. So we're still looking for motion, please.
I move that the planning commission find that the initial study I.S. 20-27 applied for by Walnut Ranch Farms on property located at 12182 White Rock Canyon Road and 12206 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, and further described as APNs 022-010-04 and 022-010-05 will not have a significant, a significant effect on the environment and therefore a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 20, March 10, 2022 and as amended here today.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, I further move that the planning commission find that the use, major use permit U.P. 20-24 applied for by Walnut Ranch Farms on property located at 12182 White Rock Canyon Road and 12206 Elk Mountain Road, Upper Lake, and further described as APNs 022-010-04 and 022-010-05 does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 of the Lake County Zoning Ordinance and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated in March 10, 2022 and as amended here today.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the planning commission's decision, an appeal to the board of supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fees may, excuse me, must be submitted prior to 5:00 p.m. on or before the seventh calendar day following the planning commission's final determination. I'm showing a time of 10:04. Before we bring up our third agenda item, we are going to take a quick break until 10:10. Thank you. If we could start winding down, finding our seats and getting prepared for the, for the next item, thank you. Okay, showing a time now of 10:10. Going to bring up our third item. It's a public hearing on consideration of major use permit U.P. 20-81 and a mitigated negative declaration I.S. 20-97. The applicant, Red Hills R. HRP1, Crystal Keesey, is proposing 25 A Type 3 medium outdoor commercial cannabis cultivation licenses consisting of 35 acres of cultivation area and 25 acres of canopy area and one A Type 13 self-distribution license. Also proposed are two 120 square foot sheds, one 64 square foot cannabis waste storage and compost area, one 312 square foot portable office building, one 312 square foot portable building for use as an employee break room, three 60,000 gallon water storage tanks, portable restrooms, and a six foot tall security privacy fence. Project is located at, standby. I just want to make sure I can read the parcel numbers for you. APN 009-022-54, which is the primary, and 009-022-55, 009-056-01. And.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Go ahead, whenever you're ready, Eric. And the property is located at 8550 State Highway 175, Kelseyville.
We're going to request a continuance. The legal notice that you read the APNs from, the third APN is actually 0110560 whatever.
Okay.
It showed as being 009, it is not, it's 011. We caught the error after the notices went out. We've recirculated the correct notice and we're requesting a continuation until March 24th. I'm prepared to do the presentation today, but we would have to redo it on the 24th anyway. So I want to put out to the planning commission, would you care to continue it to hear the presentation in two weeks?
Thank you, Eric.
Is the applicant here today?
No, Jake, do you see any hands in the Zoom room by any chance to verify that the applicant is on live with us right now?
I do have a hand raised from Crystal Keesey here, I'll give her permission to speak.
Excellent.
Representing the applicants.
Good morning, commissioners and staff. We were notified of the incorrect APN number. And so we agree with staff that a continuation would be appropriate at this point. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have. And I'm here at your pleasure, thank you.
Thank you. Staff, or excuse me, the commission, would you guys like to wait until the 24th? Or would you want to hear the report now and then hear it again on the 24th?
The 24th works for me.
Okay, sounds like we're in a consensus to go ahead and continue this item with a date certain of the 24th. So we're showing a new hearing date of March 24th, 2022. If I could just get a motion from someone to can go ahead and do that?
Aye, so move.
All in favor? All opposed? Well, thank you to Eric and for the applicant, we will go ahead and see you guys on March 24th.
Thank you, commissioners.
Thank you. Moving on to our final item, this is a public hearing of consideration of major use permit U.P. -21 and a mitigated negative declaration I.S. 20-24. The applicant is High Valley Oaks LLC. Kim Gardner and Cody William Leck is proposing four A Type 3 outdoor licenses, outdoor cultivation for adult-use cannabis without the use of light deprivation and/or artificial lighting in the canopy area at any point in time from 10,001 square feet to one acre inclusive of total canopy size on one premises and a Type 13 distributor transport-only self-distribution license. The project is located at 9850 High Valley Road, Clear Lake Oaks, California, and further described as APNs 006-004-19.
Madam Chair, before Kim Hunter actually gets started, I just wanted to introduce her. She is with our, she's our LACO consultant that's working with us with our cannabis, along with our cannabis program manager, Andrew Amalong, who is also here present, and they will together jointly present this project.
Excellent, welcome aboard, nice to see you.
Good morning, Chair Pierce, members of the commission, staff and the public. Yes, I'm Kim Hunter, I'm very excited to be in beautiful. I'm very excited to be in beautiful Lakeport this morning. This application request, I always battle with microphones, I apologize. This application request is for a major use permit, a High Valley Oaks LLC. Managing partners are Kim Gardner and Cody Leck. Use permit number is 2021, initial study 2024, early activation 2025, and early activation 2124. Okay. The address of the site is 9850 High Valley Oaks Road in Clear Lake Oaks, parcel number And then way down the bottom, what you can't see is, this has been a joint effort, but the assigned planner is Andrew, who is sitting behind me. The request is for four A Type III one-acre outdoor cultivation licenses with a Type 13 self-distribution license. The parcel size is 81.65 acres. This application was submitted February 27, 2020. As mentioned, just in the brief overview, there were early activations issued to this parcel, one in 2025, and one in, sorry, one in 2020, and another in 2021. Those were issued for approximately 87,000 square feet of canopy. The zoning in the area is rural lands with scenic combining, that does, a portion that applies to the property, the project site. General plan is rural lands. There is some adjacent open space. You can see a corner touching the project parcel, right there on the northeast corner. This area falls into the Shoreline Communities Planning Area, and the one parcel that does touch there on the corner, that is Bureau of Land Management-owned. Here's a vicinity map, locations and supervisor District 3, and the project is located approximately four miles northwest of Clear Lake Oaks, on a ridge, on the ridge, High Valley Ridge. So the outdoor canopy would not exceed 174, 240 square feet of outdoor, again, no greenhouses, with a support area of 261, 360 square feet cultivation area. There'll be three fence cultivation areas proposed with this parcel. The first area, two acres, and then areas two and three with one acre each. There'll be two employee parking areas. Employees are expected between two and five, up to five, on a seasonal basis when needed. And with those parking areas, there'll be one ADA compliance space. Okay, a few pictures of the site. Various outbuildings and support structures are proposed for the project, including a 200-square-foot shed used as office space that also has, that also is the base for security systems, along with restrooms. 64-square-foot shed for storage of chemicals, fertilizers, and hazardous materials. This, of course, will be a stormproof shed to make sure there's no water seeping in and damaging those materials. Also, a 160-square-foot container for equipment storage, and the irrigation system will be using water pumps, PVC pipe, black poly tubing, typical materials. A portable solar generator is included in the project, which is the picture that you see, and then two 2,400-square-foot temporary structures for cannabis drying and curing.
Kim?
Yes.
What does temporary mean in that context?
Temporary hoop houses, not permanent structures like a greenhouse.
So they would have no, like, foundation or, like, concrete or anything like that?
Correct.
They can be moved if needed?
They can be moved if needed.
Nice. Thank you.
There, however, on the site plan, there is, and this is critical with the scenic combining district, there is shown on the site plan where they will be placed.
Designated, okay.
Okay, a 160-square-foot harvest storage area, existing septic system. Now, this site was burned and damaged in the fire, including, there was a residence originally on the site. That residence is no longer standing. So you see in the pictures, there's burned trees, there was fire damage. Much of the vegetation was lost at that time. And so the site, that's the baseline going forward, is there was fire damage.
Again, pardon me for interrupting. Speaking of fire damage, typically, one of the water storage tanks is dedicated for fire suppression, or can be, is built differently, so it can be used for that purpose, but there's nothing referring to water storage tanks and fire suppression in this staff report.
There are water tanks included.
Correct, but normally one is...
It's not designated for fire suppression.
Metal, fiberglass, and is dedicated.
Thank you, Trish.
It is listed as a condition of, sorry, this is Andrea Amalong speaking.
Yep.
It is listed as a condition of approval.
Perfect, thanks.
It will be included in the plan.
There we go. And to the next one. Okay, the site actually has two wells. There is the main well that is, will be used for cultivation. However, there is also an existing well two, and that's reserved for backup use. Four existing 5,000-gallon water storage tanks for irrigation on-site, and four existing 1,550-gallon mixing tanks for irrigation. And then also, there's a portable ADA compliant restroom, which brings me back to where I was going with my comment on the fire. There may have been damage to the septic system during the fire. There was some heavy equipment on-site, so prior to the use of that restroom, the septic system needs to be approved by environmental health and given the okay for use.
And that is a condition of approval as well, I'm assuming? Thank you.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
The site consists of rugged mountain topography and is basically perched up on the ridge line there, with elevation ranging from 2,445 feet to 2895 feet above sea level. So, as I mentioned, the site is located on a ridge above High Valley and Long Valley watersheds, perched up there, and most vegetation and trees were burned in the 2018 Mendocino Complex fire. There's still some, but there's a picture. This is actually looking up towards the property, towards the cultivation area, and is, Andrew could speak to this more, but we'll probably be coming back to this picture later on. Access to the site is from High Valley Road. The parcel to the northeast is owned by the Bureau of Land Management and is considered to be an exclusion zone. However, the project proposal is not located within that 1,000-foot setback. It is outside of the exclusion area. Regulations reviewed for compliance for this project, Lake County General Plan, Shoreline Communities Area Plan, Lake County Zoning Ordinance, and state regulations. For the general plan project analysis, the rural lands general plan designation was reviewed. There's no conflicting policies within the general plan for this project that would apply. No specific policies addressing commercial cannabis cultivation are in the general plan. For the Shoreline Communities Area Plan, two policies stood out. First of all, policy 3.4.4A, scenic view sheds within the planning area shall be protected. And the second, 4.31.1C, promote alternatives to open burning and disposal vegetative waste, including chipping, mulching, and composting. Regarding the scenic view shed, the project does not exceed the limitations of that view shed, and Andrew probably would say this best, so I'm going to hand it over to him real quick to speak to the scenic view shed, if you don't mind, Andrew.
Yes. According to Article 34, essentially, the scenic combining district limits greenhouses, hot houses, and incidental structures to 5,000 square feet. I think there's a slide coming up where I overlaid the scenic combining district with the site plans, and you can see that the square footage does not exceed it. But furthermore, as that previous photo showed, that is the only part of the project that is visible from High Valley Road. And as a condition of approval, even though it is not required according to Article 34, I have put in conditions that they provide added vegetative screening for that section, just to preserve the view shed.
Okay, thank you.
Today, I'm battling with microphones and PowerPoints. I apologize. Yeah, there is a picture coming up on that. And then promoting alternative to open burning disposal, and none of, yeah, compost and off-site removal be taking place for any cannabis waste. Lake County zoning ordinances, sections referred were Article 27, or referenced, excuse me, uses generally permitted, Article 7, rural lands, and Article 30, special lot size and densities, and of course, Article 34, the scenic combining district, which there were no conflicts, and the project is in compliance with those policies of the zoning ordinance. Okay, here's the picture. I forgot we added this slide. I got a little preview. So the blue is the scenic combining district corridor that runs along High Ridge Road, which is identified by the Shoreline's Community Plan. Much of the area, well, it's about equal, there's a bit in and a bit out, however, as Andrew summarized very succinctly, it's still in compliance with the scenic combining district, with an approved major use permit. The project analysis for SEQA resulted in a recommended determination of a mitigated negative declaration. All of the impacts that were identified as possibly potentially being significant were able to be mitigated and reduced to less than significant. The initial study and proposed or draft mitigated negative declaration was sent to the State Clearinghouse. That comment period was from December 1st to December 31st, 2021. And mitigations are outlined in Attachment 3, the proposed conditions of approval, and in Attachment 4, the initial study. Those areas where potential impacts to resources could occur included aesthetics, air quality, biological resources, cultural resources, and tribal cultural resources, geology soils, hydrology water quality, hazards, and hazardous materials, noise, and wildfire. Recommendations of staff are to adopt a mitigated negative declaration, initial study IS 2024, and approve major use permit UP 20-21 with conditions. Prior to concluding a staff report, I do want to touch on the comments that were received. There were several comments received, some from state agencies, just reminding us of their jurisdiction over the permitting process, and then two from adjacent landowners and one concerned citizen. With those, let me get to my comment sheet real quick. Concerned voice included property lines, impacts to rural, rural conditions, traffic, noise, and odor. Those, there's been several conditions of approval that have been added specifically to address those issues, including conditions A, 5, 6, and 7, starting out with those prior to construction for the drying tents. These are the temporary structures. The applicant shall obtain a temporary structure building permit from the Lake County Building Department.
They are.
And the placement of the temporary structures is limited to the specified locations for the drying tents on the site plan stated May 18, 2021, and prepared by North Point Consulting Group Incorporated. Condition A 6, prior to operations, a ground survey of the property must be conducted to determine the exact property line on the western border of the project parcel adjacent to property described as APN 006-004-18. That is an adjacent property. Currently, there are two access points to the project parcel. There's concern that maybe there's access occurring that's happening on one of those access points that may be across property lines. Those mainly address the comments that you may have received this morning, I believe green-shetted.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. From Janet Miles. So the survey is being required, that's conditions A 6 and A 7. One comment was a vegetated buffer along the property line. Actually, at that property line, vegetation still exists on the site. And then traffic. The traffic is for the two to five workers. There's a few thoughts on that that I'd like to share with you. First of all, this is a seasonal outdoor operation. There'll be, so it's not going to be all year. It's not going to be during the wet season and the winter months where road damage can occur. Secondly, there's no residents at the site any longer, and the thresholds comparing the uses are comparable to having a residence and the trips that could be included with maybe a five-person household or a four-person household with everybody driving. So the Office of Planning and Research does set, now that SEQA has moved to a VMT model, vehicles mile traveled model, they have set a threshold of small projects. The county does not have those at this time. It's very common, very few counties, especially rural counties do. However, that threshold is 110 trips, and that's to and back, counted separately, not round trips. And that threshold, this project would generate definitely less than that project, that threshold for small projects, that is set by the state. So Phil, that that is not a significant impact, and that is reflected in the initial study discussion as well. Another comment was received regarding wildlife habitat, and that resulted in another condition of approval for, under the biological section, I believe it's D 5. And it was just concern about loss of habitat and to birds and other species. So that condition of approval reads as the following. The applicant shall install a minimum of five owl nest boxes placed 10 to 30 feet high, either on existing trees or on two-inch... high, either on existing trees or on two-inch diameter street posts, and shall be a minimum of 10 feet apart with peat moss shavings, et cetera, placed in the boxes. Owl nest boxes shall be cleaned out each year.
And to add on that, in a site visit in September of 2021, the applicant had mentioned issues in addition to using organic pesticides, they'd had rodent issues on the property coming from the surrounding habitat. So, and to address one problem and another concern, it just seemed to make the most sense. Those recommendations came from a Dr. Bloom, an ornithologist from Southern California. He's done a lot of work on condors, and we worked out those requirements with Donna Mekowitz of the Red Bun Auto Bun Society.
I think that's great. Thank you.
I thought that section on the owl nest boxes was fascinating.
Yeah.
Interesting read.
Definitely.
And I liked Dr. Bloom's comments very much.
I hope to work with him more.
Yeah.
Yeah, it was a very good staff report.
Just for the record, the owl boxes, the owls won't move in unless they're 30 feet up off the ground. Yeah.
Thank you, Commissioner Field.
Owls are specifically good because they are night, you know, they get the gopher, I don't even know the English word, the topos, they get the ground, the gophers.
Gophers. Excellent. So staff, that concludes your report?
It does.
Excellent.
Happy to answer any questions you may have.
You did great. So that concludes their report, and you guys want to discuss it before we open it up for public comment at all?
I just have a question for the applicant. What's the, what's the spacing?
Between?
The plant spacing?
You're welcome to approach the podium, so you can go ahead and answer those questions. It's okay. And please state your first and last name, and be sure to fill out the green card when you're ready.
Got it. Good morning, everybody. My name's Cody Lick, and just to answer your question, ma'am, the spacing on our plants is about 24 by 24 inches. So we pack them in tight because we want to have small plants is our overall, like, cultivation goal, because we experience strong winds up on the ridge line. So our goal is to grow smaller plants and more of a sea of green type methodology. And it also helps with our water consumption on the site, because a lot of our farmers that use bigger plants thin out a lot inside of their plants. So I view that as a waste of not only water, but also just nutrients and energy that's required for the plants to grow. So our methodology is smaller plants, tighter end, and I don't got to worry about nearly as much of the wind damage and stuff like that, so.
That's very interesting. I was, you know, I look at these projects, and I guess the rule of thumb from CDFA is 500 plants per acre, and that's more like, what, 6,000 plants per acre?
Yeah, yeah, I don't have, exactly have the math off the top of my head, but we also plant with like a white mulch, so there is quite a bit of spacing in between our rows, so we can actually access up and down the rows and give ourselves like workable ground. But our methodology is smaller plants, tighter because of water use and also the wind up on the ridge. So, because we get very frequently 30, 40 mile an hour winds up there.
Sure.
So we've had to take that into consideration with our cultivation methods and stuff, so.
Interesting. Okay, yeah, we usually use the six gallons per plant, which apparently isn't going to be applicable. And if, if we do, I was kind of penciling it out at five by five, which is?
25 square feet?
Yeah, and you're, that's a lot less, so. But, you know, even though, if you had five by five, you'd need three times the water that this is proposing, but you have that water, so I think it's irrelevant.
Yeah, perfect. And I think we got Angie Dodd, who is our like PhD hydrologist, on the line too, to kind of talk about a little bit more of our water consumption. And we have our solar powered water meter and stuff up there where we've been reporting to the state water agencies and everybody as well to meet all of those requirements as well, so.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're very welcome. Thank you.
Do any of the other commissioners have any questions for staff or for the applicant before I open it up for public comment?
No, I'd just like to note, I appreciated reading the agency comments, the aggressive outreach you did.
Yeah, and addressing them upfront. That's great.
And to try to address those on the front side.
Mm-hmm. Okay, and we'll go ahead and officially open it up for public comment. Jake, do we have any hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, we do have, one hand came up in the Zoom room here. I have a hand up from Jane. Jane, I've given you permission to speak. Looks like you're immediately, please confirm your first and last name.
My name is Jane Nagri, and I am one of the owners of the adjoining parcel number And this, this property has been in our family for 92 years, and the parcel that's being developed was also in our family for, oh, maybe 70 years. And so we are, we're very concerned. It's always been raw land. It's been in our family as a hunting camp, just a camp for our family, time to go up and enjoy peace and quiet and birds and everything else that's up there on Bartlett Mountain. And our, my real concern is that there was no survey completed when this land was bought as a commercial property. And they are kind of going off of just, what should I say? Not a land survey, I don't know what you call it, but I'm very thankful that Andrew has put in the, oh, what do you call them? Starts with a C.
Conditions.
Conditions, thank you, that they are going to do a land survey. That will be a huge relief for us. As we know, the road in, from the side of High Valley Road is on our property. And for every sale that's gone through, that has always been disclosed. And somehow, Mr. Winkler, the person that sold it to this company, did not do that. And so this company has been using the road supposedly with Mr. Winkler telling them that it was all right. And there is no easement on that road. And I've talked to the owners, and they've agreed that they will not use it anymore. And another concern we had, of course, was the fact that High Valley Road is a very rural country road. And when we talk about car trips, we know most car trips for small businesses are, are not on a mountaintop and with a road that sometimes you can't even pass in the wintertime. So we're concerned that there are going to be major improvements to that road to accommodate this business, and it will no longer seem like the rural mountain that we've been on forever. So I, I do have a concern about that. And let me check here.
Jane, and just to let you know, you have reached your three minutes, so if we could just kind of get to, maybe a concluding statement?
Yes, I will just say, the survey is number one, and thank you, Andrew, for putting that in the conditions.
Thank you for your comment. Andrew, did you want to just kind of reiterate maybe the conditions six and seven or anything else that she kind of had concerns? I thought that we kind of touched on that, just in response to her concerns.
One response, I think she didn't get to, a concern she had was that the gate on the driveway that she was accessing, there was a lock on it, and she requested that lock be removed. It's not in the conditions, but it's there.
Okay.
Furthermore, in the initial study, the, basically, the estimated trips per day for the proposed project are between 5 to 12 during construction and operation, only operating between, I believe, the months of May and October. So I think major impacts on the road will be less than significant.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. Commissioner Chavez, did you have something to say?
Sure. So we've had another project in the same area come up to us before. Is my microphone working? And the concerns that were brought up was due to the school being there, but as we see the hours of operation are going to be, it would be during like summer, so there won't be any issues with traffic or anything like that. So that was my only concern, because I remember we had a project similar in the same area, so I just wanted to bring that up.
And I believe the elementary school next to High Valley Road off of Highway 20? That was your, that was something that we had?
It's like.
Mm-hmm. We slacked.
Sorry, I have it here in the initial study, the distance from there. It might take me a minute to look up, but I believe it was something like four miles from the school, so it's not in close proximity.
Yeah, the concern wasn't, the proximity was mainly like accessed through where?
Ah, I see.
Yeah, like the intersections and crossings and all that, yeah.
Okay. Well, I mean, five to 12 trips, as much, however much that would affect traffic on that road has not been looked at. Actually, this is the first I'm hearing of this issue, and it's the first time it's, this concern has been raised for this project. So to that extent, we can take a closer look at that. But at the moment, I really don't see five to 12 trips really impacting it, especially during the hours of operation.
Well, and it's seasonal nature, too.
Yeah, the majority of it's during summer. It will overlap towards the end of the school year and the beginning of the school year. I think the greatest impact would probably be September and October, because that's when, I guess, the most activity will be taking place on the project.
Sure. Thank you. I still have public comment open. Jake, has any, has there been any hands that are raised currently?
Yes, we do have an additional hand raised from Angie Dodd.
Thank you.
Angie, you have permission to speak? Oh, looks like you're immediately, please confirm your first and last name?
Yeah?
Good morning, Planning Commission. Thank you for letting me speak. My, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Thank you.
My name is Angie Dodd. I'm with North Point Consulting, and I'm here to answer any questions regarding to water. There was a comment brought up regarding, regarding water use and the six gallons per minute, 500 plants per acre. That's just a rule of thumb. Every cultivator is different. There's, that six gallons per plant varies quite wildly depending on where you are. A lot of cultivators operate a lot less than six gallons per plant due to the efficiency of water use. Fortunately for this project, they early activated and operated both in 2020 and in 2021, and as part of the requirement to enroll with the Water Board, they are required to submit water metering for their cultivation. And according to this project in 2020 and 2021, for each year for the two acres, they used about 375,000 gallons of water. Over in 2021, it was about 100 to 105-day cultivation season, so that was about 1,800 gallons per acre per day. And the one thing, the other thing to understand about the six gallons per plant and that 3,000 gallons per acre, that's assumed spread out over the whole cultivation season. Plants will use a lot less at the beginning and a lot less at the end, so it's really an order of magnitude and represents consistently what we see for outdoor cultivation throughout Northern California. Cody mentioned that they do grow smaller plants, but they did use quite a bit less water than that 3,000 gallons per, per acre over the last two seasons that they did cultivate. So I did write the hydrology report. I'm here to answer any questions. I just wanted to clarify about that water use. Thank you.
Thank you. Jake, any other hands in the Zoom room?
Yeah, we did have another hand come up here from Jane. Jane, I've given you permission to speak.
Is that the?
Hi, my name is Jane Nagri, and I forgot my sister's comment. She's the co-owner with me. She, when she looked at the plot map, noticed that the septic system is very close to our property line, and we, we're not sure if that's the old one that our aunt and uncle put in in the 1950s, but we are concerned that it's so close to our property line, and it might be the ancient septic system. Thank you.
Thank you.
To comment on that, if we could go back to the site plan on the PowerPoint, if possible. If you refer to that site plan, you can notice that the septic system, while, I mean, maybe glancing at the plan, there might be interpretation that it is close to the property line, but it's, you know, easily a few hundred feet from the property line. And in addition to that, we have a condition here that prior to the use of the existing septic tank on the project site, approval of use must be permitted through the County of Lake Environmental Health Department. I spoke with Environmental Health, and this project had gone through two planners before I came to it. I think at one point, an inspection had been done, and the septic tank looked fine. There was no problem. However, we cannot find evidence of that inspection. So before they put that septic tank into use, we would require another inspection.
Thank you. I do remember seeing it on, on one of the slides. Okay. I'm going to bring it back to chambers. Anybody else wish to speak on this before I close public comment? Okay. Jake, no more hands in the Zoom room?
Yes, there, correct, there are no more hands in the Zoom room.
Thank you. I will go ahead and officially close public comment and bring it back to the commission for some discussion and possibly some motion. I will just say, I do appreciate your guys' staff report and answering the questions with the green sheets and stuff ahead of time. That's great. Yeah.
Just one quick comment. I appreciate all the work that you guys have put into this. It's really cool to see that you guys are wanting to use like solar power and stuff like that, and that you know, that you want to go with smaller plants for the reasons in the area that you guys are in. So it looks like you guys know how to work with your environment, and it's just nice to see that you guys care about as much of this project.
Nice, thank you very much.
Commissioner Fields, you have anything to say?
Oh, I just think it's really interesting about the water consumption. I mean, we go by these numbers that are kind of from other counties and different, you know, your wind is going to really dry your plants out. These evapotranspiration rates, you know, we, they're different in Humboldt County and Mendocino County than they are here, and we just don't really know what is going. So it'd be interesting. What your consultant said sounds like about, if I'm doing the math right, about one gallon per plant per day. I'd just be really curious to see what it ends up being at the end of the year. That's all. And thank you.
That's another, like, it is nice to know and have those metrics to kind of go back on and look, because I'm sure something on High Valley grows differently than, say, something, you know, in the valley. Yeah. So, excellent. I don't think we have any further questions, looking to the commission for some movement.
I'm prepared to make a motion.
Please.
I move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-21 applied for by High Valley Oaks LLC on property located at 9850 High Valley Road. Clear Lake Oaks, further described as APNs 006-004-19, will not have a significant effect on the environment, and therefore, a mitigated negative declaration shall be approved with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 4th, 2022.
Second?
It's been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I further move that the Planning Commission find that the major use permit UP 20-21 applied for by High Valley Oaks LLC on property located on 9850 High Valley Road. Clear Lake Oaks, further described as APNs 006-004-19, does meet the requirements of Section 51.4 and the Article 27, Section 1 of the Planning County Zoning Ordinance, and the major use permit be granted subject to the conditions and with the findings listed in the staff report dated March 4th, 2022.
Second?
Moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries. Please note that the applicant or any interested person is reminded that the zoning ordinance provides for a seven calendar day appeal period. If there is a disagreement with the Planning Commission, an appeal to the Board of Supervisors may be filed. The appropriate forms and applicable fee must be submitted prior to 5:00 PM on or before the seventh calendar day. Thank you for that. Moving on for our untimed staff update with some office news. Nice to see you, Director Darby.
Hello, everyone. I am so excited to see you, and I apologize for not being here to our last commission hearing, but I understand we all got through it, so that's great.
We got through it, yeah.
Like to say a very special thank you to our Laco consultant, Kim Hunter. Like to say a very special thank you to our Laco consultant, Kim Hunter, and our cannabis program manager, Andrew Amalong. They are doing an excellent job. We have created a cannabis section in our department, and that does include Andrew Amalong, Jamie?
Henry.
Henry. She is our community development technician. She's newly on board. And also Mary Claybon, who has been promoted to our assistant planner. She used to be our C D D. tech. And so that group together, that team working with Laco are doing a great job. So I'm very impressed and proud of what they've done and where they're going. In terms of, I wanted to speak a little bit about our revised cannabis ordinance because I know you're waiting to see that. So we should finalize our review in-house with staff, put that, and present that before the board, I'm hoping, the Board of Supervisors, by the end of March, early April, and we'll be preparing our workshops for all stakeholders. But I would get that to you, of course, prior to it being released. The, some of the other updates we have, I just want to keep in the back of your mind that June ninth, we need to determine whether or not we are going to adjourn that Planning Commission hearing because there will be a budget hearing here in the chambers, and there's a conflict. So we either need to adjourn it or determine if we will relocate that meeting for June ninth. Other updates is that Satir Ham, our assistant planner, is no longer with our department. She has moved on to B L M. as an employee there, but she did stop by and say hi to us today.
That was nice.
So that was great. So other great news, so William Collins, he goes by Bill. He is going to be our newly hired chief building official. He starts Monday, March fourteenth. So he will be a part of the Board of Supervisors meeting for introduction, and hopefully, he'll be here at our March fourteenth meeting, so you guys can meet him as well. The other great news we have is James Finan. He goes by Jim. He is going to be our part-time O A. three, so he'll be our P C. support staff. And so we will be relieving Trish of her duties, and you'll be getting minutes when he gets here, and that's his first assignment. So he is here today. He's in orientation. We were hoping that he would be able to stop by today. However, he is still there, so at our next meeting, he'll be here March twenty-fourth. And that.
Thank you, Trish.
Yes.
I know, she's done a great job.
You have been great.
She's hung in there. And so right now, that would conclude my update. Everything else that I will have for you will come through an email.
I just, Kim and I had a moment outside of chambers, but small world. She actually works with, she was in Trinity County, and she knows Duncan and Irish, what, Rory? So when we went to our conference in Eureka, we got to meet some of her fellow planning commissioners from Trinity County, and I think it's going to be a great asset to have you onboard with your knowledge of how they've kind of handled their ordinances and their cannabis laws and the, what was it, the cannabis industry or innovative zoning with all like the commercial and processing going on. So welcome aboard. We're happy to have you, Andrew. We're happy to have you too. And fantastic job today.
Mr. Price, I do apologize for not saying your name correctly.
Oh, it's, I don't think anybody caught it. The only one that caught it was you and I. But yes, thank you so much. So if you guys have anything else to say, please feel free.
I'd just like to add that those changes you've made internally in terms of carving out some staff to focus on cannabis and to clear paths for others is really welcome, and there have been a lot of reasons why it's taken a while to get to that point, but I applaud you for getting that in order.
Kind of taking the bull by the horns, Director Darby.
Thank you, thank you very much. And you'll see a lot more changes that are coming soon.
Excellent.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that kind of covers all the bases. Again, thank you for your time, and we'll go ahead and adjourn the meeting.